You can call the meeting for the San Francisco Planning Board to order. My. Document. Okay, before we begin, this is a reminder that this is a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom. Two to one M R S A, section four oh three dash A. Welcome to the San Francisco Planning Board meeting for January sixth thousand twenty-one. It will come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes for the executive section. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Note by the chair if you are unable to see or hear something. Please note that if any planning board members have any potential conflicts of interest, which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on the application. All persons speaking will be asked to state their name and address and then proceed. Sole discretion of the chair. Public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. Each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. After the chair will ask the opponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and those who are either for or against. They will ask questions or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity. Sure. Any questions must go through and through the chair who will then will then decide at what point we get to ask staff whether upon. Will they after testimony completed, the seat questions. Public board members. Nothing rudeness. The plan and ruling except for will not be tolerated. The day you defer. The chair at his discretion terminate the here. Reschedule it for another day. Here at his discretion will limit repetitious comments. Close entirely for the individual committee that she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. The applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board that shares discretion ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to the question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local state federal laws. This regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of San Francisco subdivision, site plan, control land, zoning ordinances, or other relevant After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on the written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeal rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project they are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Anyone wishes to repeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. City's ordinances and conference has a plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in Planning and Development Department's office at nine nineteen Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding and you have the right to see and hear what is happening and we welcome public participation. Um, with that, I guess we can do a roll call.
Um, Oliver Jones. Oliver, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Jack McAdam.
Yeah.
Diane Connolly. I know I saw her on the list. Diane.
Present.
Thank you. Um, Tom Morgan.
Yeah.
And, uh, Crystal Tenny.
Here.
Lenny Hor.
Present.
Mr. Chair, that is six of the seven members.
Okay. That brings us to the next item on our agenda is the election of offices. The first office to fill is Chair of the Committee. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate yourself, Lenny Hor, for Chair.
I would like to echo that nomination. This is Crystal.
Okay, I guess we need a roll call vote.
Oliver.
Yes, I'm.
Jack.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Uh, Tom.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
And Lenny.
Do I have to vote on myself?
Uh, I don't think you have a right to abstain.
Okay, I'll say yes.
Okay, it's unanimous six oh.
Well, everybody, I guess.
Congratulations.
Okay, that that leaves us to the position of vice chair. Um, I'd like to nominate Jack McAdam.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. And a vote.
Oliver.
Yes.
Jack.
Oh, yes, of course.
Diane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
And Lenny.
Yes.
The vote is six oh unanimous.
Okay, and we need a secretary.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Jones.
Sounds good. I'll second that. Oliver, are you up to that?
You know what? Yes, I will.
Okay.
Um, perhaps we should take a moment and just let Oliver know what he's in for. Um, Oliver, this is a little bit different than design review. Um, the planning department does prepare the draft minutes. Um, so the primary responsibility of the secretary is to review those minutes and make sure they're accurate and then ultimately to sign them. And then periodically, there may be a few things here and there that might occur over the course of the year.
I think I may be able to handle that.
Okay.
You're a good sport, Oliver. Thanks.
Yes, he is. Oh, let's do a vote on that.
Oliver, you get to vote on yourself first.
I'll say yes.
Okay, Jack.
Yes, welcome aboard, Oliver.
Diane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
Lenny.
Yes.
The vote six oh unanimous.
Okay. That brings us to the next item on our agenda. It's the adoption of the planning board bylaws. Beth, I don't know if you want to take a minute to get us oriented with with what's happening with this?
Sure. Yes, um, if you'll give me just a moment, I want to pull up my notes here. Um, so, uh, I, 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 based upon the comments that were provided by the board, I did propose a series of modifications and I can go through them uh, one at a time. Um, and I will actually raise an additional issue that I, I did not raise in my memo. Something that, uh, came to our attention after we sent this out. So the first change is on page one. And it lists the anticipated date of adoption as of today. Obviously, if you don't adopt them today, we'll modify that. Section one point, one point, two point four, which is also on page one, is a slight editing of the text. Um, in section, and, and tell me if I'm going too fast, guys. In section two point three, on page three, um, there is a reference to records of the streamed meeting. Um, this is in addition to the section that's talking about, um, storing tapes of the meeting. Well, we don't do tapes anymore. Uh, we stream them. And so this is new language to try to capture that change in our technology. Section two point four point two, which is also on page three, um, the last line includes an omitted end bracket. So again, just editorial. Um, section two point four point three on page three um, adds reference to texting as a form of communication that's not allowed in, in the form of an ex parte communication. Um, I am gonna, let me go through the rest of them and I'm gonna return to the one that I think we missed. Um, section three point one point two, which is on page four. Um, this is the first reference to video teleconferencing and Zoom. And again, this is something that has come into, um, use since the last, uh, adoption of the bylaws. And so this is bringing, um, us up to date. Section three point one point three, also on page four, is just renumbering, um, plus a reference to the potential use of video conferencing rather than cancellation during inclement weather. And that's certainly something that, um, uh, would be, um, you know, if we're, if we're using video conferencing and everybody's got power, then probably there's no need, uh, to cancel. However, if there's a scattered loss of power so that we don't have a full group, um, then cancellation may still be in order. Um, and all of this would be up to the chair. The next one is section three point two point one, also on page four, and it's just adjusted the section number, um, of reference. Um, the next one is on page, uh, page four also, section three point two point three. Um, again, this is a new section regarding the conduct of video, video teleconference meetings. Um, and it's a summary of the much more detailed protocols that the planning board, um, adopted, uh, informally and has been using since we've been using teleconferencing. Pages five through eight, um, have all renumbered sections. Uh, page six, uh, section three point two point six, again, there's a new numbering of a section of reference. Uh, then you go all the way to page nine, section three point three point one. Again, there's an added reference to video teleconferencing for the site plan review committee meeting. Section five point six on page twelve adds a sentence regarding public use of electronic devices that interfere or disrupt meetings, and the intention here is to disallow those. And then I'm gonna take us back to, um, section three point one point one, which is, I believe, either on page three or four. I'm sorry, I added this after I, um, had put this together. Um, in that section of the existing bylaws, it, um, references, uh, the calendar um, for the year being adopted at the first meeting in January. Um, we did not follow that this year. We adopted that schedule in December. So it was not in compliance with the bylaws. If you want to continue to do that, because otherwise we don't know what the, you know, the first meeting date in January is, um, then you, the bylaws would need to be amended. Um, you may want to consider the fact that that calendar would be being adopted without the benefit of input from potentially some new members. We have, um, you know, two new members this evening, one of whom is not here. Um, uh, because of the late notice of adoption of appointment. Um, so one of the things that you could do is if you want to leave the bylaws the way they are, and this mirrors what the city council tends to do as well, um, is that you could propose an amendment to the existing calendar for twenty twenty-one that was adopted in December um, to add the date of, um, the, uh, first meeting in January. And then we don't have to be concerned that we have to, uh, adopt, adopt this out of order uh, or without the option of having the new members being a beneficiary, except that obviously they would have to abide by that first meeting in January. And if you want to do that, then the first meeting in January twenty twenty-two would be, um, January fifth. That's what I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, I guess it sounds like we need to do an amendment for this tonight?
Um, so my, my suggestion is that, uh, if you have no concerns, that you go ahead and, uh, make a motion to adopt the amendments. If you would like to take any of them, um, uh, and discuss them more fully, I'd encourage you to do so. Um, and again, the one thing I would suggest you want to do is kind of have a conversation about this adoption of the calendar so that we can, um, um, basically, if you, if you decide you want to add the January fifth twenty twenty-two to the existing year's calendar, um, then you can do that as a separate motion after you adopt the bylaws, or you decide that you want to, uh, table the further work.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Um, can I throw something at you, and I don't mean to get you off track? There was something that came to my attention this afternoon when I was rereading the bylaws. Um, there's on page number two, on one point three point two. They talk about, um, letters of resignation. And I'm wondering if, i- is that section there strong enough to say to, um, board members, if for some reason they have to set, uh, step down, that a letter of resignation should be made as a courtesy to other planning board members, to the council, to the general public? Or would you like to leave it the way it's written?
I just got it in front of me. Let me, give me a second here to read that.
It's on page number two.
I think the intention there is
And Diane, that could be, that could be, uh, it, it, it actually, while it talks about a letter of resignation there on one point three point two, um, if you're talking about a, a, a board member stepping down separate from this issue associated with not, um, attending on a regular basis, you may want to, uh, create a new one point three point three.
Okay.
That would, uh, basically express what you're trying to express, that there, there should be some sort of, um, letter of resignation if, if, for, for whatever reason the member has to step down.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a courtesy to both other members, the council, that appoint us and also to the public in general to let them know. And
The intention there, I think, was to get to, to ask the, uh, a member who's not attending to ask them to submit a, a letter of resignation.
Okay, so can we add another point in there?
I think it's already in there, though. Am I, am I misreading it? I think it's already there.
I think the issue, Lenny, is that that section that, that Diane originally pointed to was talking about a member asking to submit a letter of resignation if they weren't attending meetings. Um, I think what she's suggesting is if for some other reason a board member needs to step down. For example, our chair moved last year in the middle of, uh, toward the end of the year. Jennifer left. And so, um, if you add this new section one point three point three, it would make it clear that for, if for whatever reason a member has to step down, the member will submit a letter of resignation, a letter of resignation, um, to the, uh, to the chair.
I, I thought it was understood that would happen. But yeah, I mean, if you, if we need to put it in writing, I guess we can.
I'm just wondering if, if that's something that you would agree to.
I guess, yeah. Would be all right with me. I, how does everybody else feel about that?
Hey, this is Tom. Uh, I mean, I have no problem with adding it. I do believe that would probably better put in, uh, section one point one uh, under membership because we're talking about departure from the board regardless of attend, of attendance, which that would be the attendance section, three point two, or, uh, whatever it was. One point three.
Okay.
One point one would probably be a better section.
Uh, okay. I'm not, like I said, I think it should be there, uh, as a courtesy and, but where to put it, I'm not there's where I need your input.
Um, I think you could actually put it in as a new section, one point one point four.
I might just throw this out there. I thought it was, in the event that a board member were simply to walk away without any, any communication, I thought it was up to the city council to actually remove them. Is that, is that not correct?
Um, assuming they're notified. But again, in the case of Jennifer, um, you know, she, she made the announcement that her last meeting was gonna be at the end of November. None of us bought to ask her to submit a letter of resignation. This would just make it clear.
Yeah, I guess.
Lenny, I brought this up. Sorry, Lenny. I brought this up because, uh, about four or five years ago, when Mr. Lanigan stepped down from the planning board, when he got elected to city council, he submitted, um, as a courtesy, a letter of resignation and to inform. And I think it should be put on record. That's all.
Okay. So I guess the question is where to put this now? Do we want as, do it as Tom suggested, or put it under the attendance policy?
I like where Tom said to put it.
Okay.
This is Crystal. I agree with Tom's suggestion as well.
So as Beth recommended, one point one point four, new section or new, new line, uh, to cover this issue.
Yep, and I, I did take an opportunity to draft some possible language to see if this will work for you. Um, and it could be something like this. If for any reason a member has to step down, the member will submit a letter of resignation to the chair.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I like it.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we need a motion.
How about the rest of the, yeah, how about the rest of the proposed changes? Are there any that need discussion?
I'm okay with it. Does anybody else have something they want to discuss with us?
Looks fine to me, Jack.
This is Crystal. I did not have any questions or proposed changes.
I'm okay with the rest of it, Diane.
No, I'm all set.
It's Oliver. Looks good to me.
And this is assuming of course that we're gonna be in the future, we'll be looking at the calendar in January. Is that correct?
Well, the way it's written right now, it would be in January, um, which certainly makes sense if you want to include the new members that are appointed. Um, if you like that idea, then I would suggest you have a motion to adopt as proposed with the addition of the new one point one point four. Take a vote on that. And then if you'd like to take a separate, uh, motion, second and vote on adding, uh, the January fifth twenty twenty-two date to the twenty twenty-one calendar, then we'll, um, kind of resolve this, um, you know, this circle that we've caught ourselves in.
Okay, I'll make a motion to uh, amend the bylaws as you've described. I can't, I can't repeat it word for word.
About how, as proposed with the addition of the new language in one point one point four.
One point one point four, that, yep, that sounds good.
Motion to accept or second, Jack.
Okay, all in favor.
Well, roll call vote.
Yep.
Okay, Oliver.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yeah.
Crystal.
Yes.
Lenny.
Yes.
That's unanimous six oh.
Okay, so now we need to take action on the bylaws to reflect tonight's, tonight's date. Is that correct?
No, uh, uh, no, you've already, uh, you've already acted on the amendment of the bylaw or the adoption of the bylaw. Now, if you want to add that January fifth twenty twenty-two date to the twenty twenty-one calendar, then there should be a motion to that effect.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we add the, uh, January fifth twenty twenty-two, um, amendment part to the January twenty twenty-one calendar. Did that, did that go right? Uh, okay.
All right, I'll second that. Roll call vote.
Oliver.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
Lenny.
Yes. Okay, that was interesting. Okay, let's try the next item on our agenda. Um, let's go for the minutes for December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Diane.
Second, Tom.
Hey, a roll call vote on that.
Oliver.
Approved.
Jack.
Oliver wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, I got
Oh, that's right. Oliver, you can't vote. Sorry.
Sorry.
Look, even I'm looking at, even my review minutes.
So, um, uh, Kate, please catch me if I call a name that was not allowed to vote, um, because they were not at the meeting. Jack.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Crystal.
I was not at the last meeting. I am not, um, able to vote.
Okay, thank you. And Lenny.
Yes.
So the vote is four oh, um, and Oliver and Crystal not in attendance. Motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to the first item under hearings and business. Um, this is for file R one two A dash thirteen. This is for Court Automotive Group, Chair of Henry Hess of Sadeco Techniques. Beth, do you want to help us get oriented on this?
Absolutely. Um, so, uh, uh, the applicant is asking for approval of an amendment to the zoning map to rezone a portion of lot R twelve A dash thirteen, which is currently zoned, single-family residential, um, to urban. Um, this is property that's owned by Granite Properties located between twenty-four Farview Drive and twelve eighty-five Main Street. It's, it's a site you'll probably recognize as the former Bonanza Restaurant. Um, the Site Plan Review Committee, uh, reviewed, uh, this request yesterday. Uh, there were, um, uh, several people from, um, uh, the audience, um, uh, who, uh, raised some concerns. Um, you know, uh, and then those concern, and the, I'll, I'll list the concerns in a second, but I do want to say that the concerns were, uh, discussed both by the applicant, um, and, um, back and forth by the applicant and the, um, uh, and the butters. Um, and then the, uh, uh, the Site Plan Review Committee weighed in and not, multiple people indicated that'll, that the bulk of the concerns that were raised were issues that would need to be addressed during a site plan review process. Um, the issues that were raised were concerns about noise pollution, uh, smells emitted from the use of the site, potential hazardous leaks on the site, um, with concern that there's a natural spring on the adjacent parcel. Uh, proposed use of the site decreasing the butter's property values. Um, requests for fencing to safeguard children within the adjacent subdivision and to screen view of the development for the residents. Um, there was also, um, uh, an email set of comments submitted by Jennifer Abel, um, Abel, excuse me, um, regarding concerns about the existing vacant house on the parcel, on a portion of the parcel that's gonna be proposed to be rezoned. Um, that particular, uh, property requires a new leach field, which would require the removal of some large pine trees in the rear of the lot. Um, I, once we get into the public hearing, if Jennifer is not here to speak for herself, then I will happily read that into the record. Um, the applicant did indicate that if the council approves the zone change, that they will extend the existing fence and provide landscaping, uh, in addition to the fence to buffer the adjacent residents from the impacts of the commercial operation uh, when they submit their site plan applications. The owner of the vacant residential property indicated that he would use some of the proceeds of the sale of the property uh, to upgrade the vacant residential property, including creation of a new leach field for sanitary waste disposal. Um, the, um, uh, the, the consultants, uh, representing the applicant indicated that they will be orienting the bays toward Main Street and away from the Farwell Drive neighbors um, as a way to try to minimize the noise impact. Um, the operating, operating hours, um, will be sort of normal early morning. Um, the operating operating hours um will be sort of normal early morning. They won't extend too early too early in the morning or beyond the uh early evening. Um, there was some discussion about um contemporary pneumatic and battery operated tools operating at half the noise level of the old ones and that the bays will be insulated with good soundproofing. Um, the applicant pointed out there'll be no underground storage chance tanks, no chance of spill leaking into groundwater because of the limited level of sensitive materials kept on site and safeguards to contain those spills. Um, and there will be no burning of odors anticipated from the operation. Um, so the recommendation from the Site Plan Review Committee is that the planning board discuss the very conduct the public hearing, discuss the various issues that were raised in the summary report. Um, and then uh the Site Plan Review Committee unanimously recommended that the um planning board um eh uh send a recommendation to um to make the zone change to the city council.
Okay, is.
And there is a suggested motion in your package.
Okay. Um, is the applicant ready to make a presentation tonight?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, uh we certainly are. Um, I could I believe I have screen sharing capabilities and I'll throw a plan up here as I give a little presentation.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, so good evening, everyone. My name's Henry Hess. I'm a landscape architect with Sebago Technics and uh representing the applicant with uh VIP Auto with me tonight, Mr. John Cork. Also getting a little feedback. Uh, so to give you a quick representation here of what's happening, uh the plan in front of you is the site located down below here is the Bonanza site, is that existing building down below. And over here is Farview Drive and Main Street on the right here. Uh, as it exists currently today, the site uh hatched in red is the site that's being requested for the zone change. That site is currently in the single family residential zone. Uh, the request is being made that that be changed to the urban zone. Uh, this particular parcel does exist on its own deed and is its own separate piece of property. Uh, it is currently surrounded by three sides by the urban zone. Uh, and it does abut this single family residential uh within Farview Drive. Uh, currently, the the parcel itself in the rear here does not have any uh access to Main Street or Farview Drive. Um, and actually, as part of the zone change, it would allow uh VIP to which currently shares space with O'Reilly Auto Parts to actually separate due to uh actually allow them to use this space and expand their their uses in Sanford. Uh, it will give O'Reilly the base they need in the current building that they're using and allow O'Reilly, um sorry, VIP to use and expand their business in the Sanford area. Uh, the zone change is the first step that VIP is looking to take before moving forward within a formal site plan. Uh, that that would then come back to the planning board at that at that time. Um, we do hope that we provided enough information for the the planning board to provide some insight and uh come to a decision this evening and hopefully make that recommendation uh for the zone change and go to city council. Um, with that, I mean, we'll be here for any questions or concerns or comments um to answer them from the board or even from the public in that matter. Uh, so if there's any other comments or concerns or questions, I'll turn that back over to the board.
Okay, um at this point, I'm gonna clear the public hearing open. And we'll take public comment. Um, if there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of this application, um let us know. Use the the raise your hand feature on Zoom.
I have I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, could could you give us your name?
Yes, this is Rex Fair, Dr. Fair. I'm the abutting um property owner to the proposed um change of the zone. Um, a problem that I I'm I'm Dr. Fair. I have a chiropractic office right here, a little bit above it. And the problem that I have is down in the basement, once a year or every other year, I get flooded. And if they go and they do some changes, there's a natural spring there. And I get flooded at least every other year, sometimes every year. And if they go make some changes, is that going to make changes in the ground level water is what I'm concerned to. There's there's right on in the middle of of my property and the proposed property, there there is a ditch which allows runoff from that community behind where Farview Drive is. And I just I I I just don't want to be flooded out in my basement because when I first moved here, I got a variance to live there and I have practice up top. And um I just I I live down there and I know what it's like to have water in your home because the of the groundwater around you. Can anybody address that to me?
Um, let's let's hold that for just a second. We're gonna collect comments right at this point. Maybe if we can make a note of that and we're gonna go back and address all of these issues.
Okay.
I'll just ask you to hold that off for just a moment. Um, is there anybody else that would like to speak um in favor of this application tonight?
Me?
Um, I'm I'm looking for anybody else in the audience tonight that would like to make comments um um in favor of this application.
This is Jeff Titherington. I'm um listening in here. I I don't have any comments to make, but I would be glad to answer any questions to the uh host on Farview Drive.
Okay, and you'll be with us through through this presentation?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Thanks for joining us. Um, and if any additional com- anybody um that is opposed to this project, would they like to make a comment? Um, any comments neither for nor against? Just remind you to use the raise your hand feature on Zoom.
Hey, Mike?
Hi. Who's this?
I heard my name. Mike Cassely's here.
No, I can hear it, but I can't get into conversation. They're talking about it. Nobody spoke against it. Nobody spoke against it.
I think we had a background conversation here.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, this is uh Board Member Conley. Uh, perhaps I'm hearing that someone wants to make a comment, but they can't get in. Um, can we talk about hitting maybe star six? Some mute people? Maybe that'll help.
We can hear him, so.
Okay, the person that just spoke is unmuted. Um, it's the phone number, N X seven three eight two. If they would like to make a comment now, it's the opportunity to.
Okay, th- that's my number. This is Kelly Tarbox. I I didn't know if you could hear me or not. I was able to sign in.
We can hear loud and clear, Kelly.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, I ju- I didn't realize that you could hear me. I I was didn't know if I was properly signed in or not.
Okay, you're you're in.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Thanks, man.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment tonight?
Mr. Chair, I do have the uh comment that I wanted to read into the record on behalf of um uh Jennifer Abel.
They can hear him.
Yeah, for him.
Okay, um, this was an email sent to um the planning department um on a, let's see if I can get the date. It was on Monday, January fourth. Uh, to whom it may concern, I have several concerns on the proposed rezoning of Tax Map Lot R twelve dash fourteen. First, should this rezoning be granted? Will a barrier fence be required to separate the newly de- des- designed urban zoning from the residential zoning? The current fence between my property and the form of Bonanza Restaurant has provided noise relief and visual separation from the business. And even though I am not a direct abutter to the rezoned split, I would have visual of the new business and I'm hopeful a barrier fence will be required. I also have concerns of the residence remaining on lot R twelve A dash thirteen. This residence has been vacant for the last five years, except for being used occasionally as a storage facility. It would be my hope that the new owners of this property would maintain this residence, including leach field and septic systems. The current condition of the residence certainly does not reflect favorably on the neighborhood. I am concerned the neglect of this property may continue if this rezoning is approved. Sincerely, Jennifer Abel, twenty eight Farview Drive, Sanford, Maine.
Okay, do we have any other emails or comments to read in?
Nope, that's it.
That's it. Okay, is there anybody else who has who has raised a hand who would like to make a comment? Molly, are you seeing anybody?
I'm not seeing anyone online.
Okay.
Um, if this one is unable to speak or has having audio issues, I'd like to remind everyone that the chat function is available. And anything I get in chat, I will be able to relay for you.
Okay. Not hearing anybody else right now, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. And I guess if you want to go back, I guess we can go back and talk about the uh concerns that Mr. Farrar raised, all about the water. Um, hello, Henry, if you want to address that?
Um, yeah, it will certainly address that. Uh, here with me tonight, I actually have a a P, uh Mr. Jim Seymour is also at Sebago Technics. If I can introduce him, I believe he's uh a little bit more qualified to speak on the flooding within the uh abutting property there.
Thank you, Henry and uh board members from Sanford. Um, yes, as far as the uh flooding goes, we will be looking at uh how to handle both surface runoff and knowing now that uh there's concerns about some groundwater issues, we'll be looking at that as well. Um, the proposal is to extend an addition off of the building going in a northwesterly direction. Um, the common property line between us and Mr. Farrar will be maintained as a lawn area with possibility of of a small treatment stormwater area in that facility. We'll work with both the city uh determine what we have for an outlet uh to get that water away from structures or away from properties so that flooding hopefully will be uh reduced. Uh, again, we have not gone into the formal design yet, but understanding that, we will take into consideration when addressing the site plan criteria.
Okay, is is Mike Cassely? I heard Mike. Mike is here with us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I thought somebody called my name. Uh, yes, what? What would you like?
Does that sound like a good plan that they have proposed?
Well, it's I think it's beginning. I think uh uh Mr. Seymour, I I think is going to be taking a look, which means he's not uh saying one way or the other uh what exactly he's going to do uh for that. Uh, he has some uh saturated soil conditions there and uh I think he needs to be careful. Um, so that's that sounds like a, you know, a fair thing to say.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd be looking at doing some kind of underdrain system. Again, uh if there's high groundwater levels, we'll obviously, we gotta take that into consideration, but anything we can do will hopefully draw down that groundwater. I'll be helpful, but we'd have to work with the city of Sanford to see what we have available for either an outlet in Main Street or some other location.
And Mr. Chair, uh this is certainly an issue that would be dealt with in some detail at a site plan review stage. And a site plan would be required to do the expansion of a building that's under discussion.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This is Mike again. Uh, I just want to make a suggestion, if that's okay, as to what to look at in the designs. Um, we became aware in the Site Plan Review Committee that a lot of the neighbors were pretty concerned about the wetlands to the, let's see, the west of this site. Uh, you one would follow uh Farview Drive around the curves there and start to head away from Route one oh nine. And there are wetlands back there and some of the neighbors there were concerned about uh and right the riparian area there and uh try to keep try to keep a healthy environment for the uh wildlife that are there. And I just wanted to point that out that the neighbors uh were concerned about that. And uh I I, you know, hope that Sebago would look in its toolbox and try to create a healthy uh kind of a challenging site to develop a site like this where you have a automotive uh part of this business and some of the runoff that might head back down that way, let alone the ground with high groundwater. But uh uh I'm hoping that Sebago can take a look at uh uh water quality uh leaving the site and uh that might mean some some housekeeping. It might mean certain types of BMPs. Uh, and I'm hoping they take a look in their tool chest and consider that.
Yes, if I can answer that, yeah, that's exactly what we have in mind. We'd be uh addressing that with um housekeeping measures uh and definitely BMP practices, be it filtration grass swales or maybe even some kind of proprietary device. Thank you.
Okay, any comments on the board? Okay, um, maybe we can take a look at the issue that was raised by Jennifer. Um, this was on the uh the fence. Um, where was this fence? So she's looking at the fence. Fence it does not exist right now. She's looking for an additional fence along her property. Is that what she's asking for?
If if I could chime in, I believe uh the concern was just making sure there was a a solid buffer or uh such as a fence in between the the proposed property or the proposed project uh in the future when it comes to a site plan review. Uh, the concern was just making sure that there was a visual barrier between uh the uses.
Okay.
I can hop in here. I'm Jeff Titherington. I own the uh house on Farview. The um uh fence on the back of the Bonanza property comes to a ninety degree turn uh heading toward Dr. Ferris uh not directly toward it, but in that direction northwest. And um I understand in talking with uh on that uh they would certainly consider extending that fence across the um uh uh property um behind the uh make a buffer for all the folks on Farview Drive. Not the whole length of Farview Drive. Particular area behind their new facility. If I'm misspoken on uh please chime in.
Mr. Chairman, this is uh John Cork, the owner of VIP. Um, you can see the existing fence that Jeff just referenced uh that runs parallel to the parking lot and the north uh lot line. And then it makes that ninety degree turn right there and we uh highlighting and we would just carry that fence further down to make sure it goes far enough down to to uh to uh, you know, create a nice buffer for the neighborhood and for for, you know, it it would help both parties, I think.
Okay, so you're proposing to do this as part of that project?
Yes. And I think Jennifer's other concern was the the house that Jeff owns there that abuts the Bonanza property, the single family resident there.
Yes.
And Jeff and I had a long discussion about that and uh, once the sale goes through to us, it's his intentions to um put a new leaching field in and get the house uh um ready to put on the market for sale, is I believe his intentions.
Yes.
The house will remain as is, but maybe just some minor changes on the grounds as you replace the septic system.
There's a lot of work that needs to be done on the house. In addition to the uh septic system, but that will all be addressed. There are a lot of very, very large pine trees in the uh backyard uh in in the lot behind VIP, so.
I think some of the other things Jeff had talked about was subsiding new.
I think some of the other things Jeff had talked about was subsiding, new siding and new roof on the house, and then along with the leach fields, he could, you know, package the house up and list it for sale, and, you know, as Jennifer had voiced her concern, you know, whenever you have a house that's not lived in for a while, it's, it's easy for it to, you know, kind of go downhill a little bit, and having, hopefully, somebody new in there who, you know, takes pride in maintaining the property would be a benefit to the neighborhood.
Okay. Um, are there any comments or questions on the board at this point?
This is Tom, I don't have any, any concern with the zoning change, I think a lot of the, a lot of the discussions, we're going to revisit them, uh, when it comes to buffering, when it comes to what's going to happen with that other adjoining property, um, as we go through the, the, uh, subdivision, or the, uh, site, site plan review effort for the, uh, for the project as a whole.
Okay, any other comments on the board?
Uh, this is Diane, I have no concerns at all, I'm okay with everything so far.
This is Crystal, I'm in agreeance as well.
Is it Jack or Oliver?
Jack, I'm okay with the, uh, zone change, we'll, we'll, uh, look at the rest of the stuff when they come back here with the site plan.
This is Oliver, I'm okay with the zone change also.
And I'm okay with it as well. Uh, Beth, do you know if Jennifer is with us tonight, is she, did she join in?
No, she's not, she was at the meeting, Site Plan Review Committee meeting yesterday.
Okay.
Um, and I did assure her that I, in addition to reading the, her comments to the Site Plan Review Committee yesterday, that I would read her comments into the record, um.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any additional comments on the board, or any, uh, it sounds like we're okay, we're all on the same page with this, I think we're all okay with it.
Yep. Mr. Chair, there is a draft motion, if you'd like me to read it into the record.
Yeah, that would be good.
And then that way, if you... Oh, good, thank you, whoever stopped that.
That was interesting.
So, um, there is a draft motion, which I would be pleased to read. Um, clearly, you're going to, um, uh, need to make a motion to either make that motion or to amend it. Um, if you give me just a moment, I'm, I'm having trouble getting it in front of me.
This is Kelly talking.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, hi, I apologize, that was me, I wasn't sure how to access to, to make a comment or ask a question, so I dialed in and caused that minor disruption, sorry.
Do you have a question?
Um, is, uh, I'm looking at the, the site plan here, and so it's just, it's not, it doesn't, the lot, the change, zone change doesn't reach back to Farview, it's just that lot right along Main Street between Bonanza and the chiropractic office, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And, and will that lot be cleared, was that the plan?
Uh, the, the goal will certainly, uh, there will be some, some trees that will probably come down, but the goal will certainly not to clear, not to clear everything, I believe some trees will be able to remain on that property, the, the goal will certainly be preserve as well we can for that property.
I'm the, I'm the property owner across the street, so I just watch hawks fly into those pine trees, so it was just interest on my part, thank you.
I understand, thank you, great question.
Okay. So, um, the draft motion, um, is, uh, that the planning board accepts the information in the January 5th, 2021 summary report, and the January 5th, 2021 Site Plan Review Committee recommendation, and recommends that the city council re-sown a portion of lot R12A-13, property owned by Granite Properties and located between 24 Farview Drive and 1285 Main Street. From a single-family residential to urban, to allow for renovation and expansion of existing buildings to be used as an A, uh, a VIP auto service showroom and service center.
Motion to accept this and pass it to the... Second, Tom.
So who made the original motion?
I heard Tom first.
Jack.
Jack.
I didn't finish getting it out, so Jack can have it.
All right, so we'll do a roll call vote, I guess.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
That's, uh, 6O, the motion passes.
Good. Good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate your time tonight.
Good, thanks, have a good night.
And we'll be back in touch about the process of taking this through the city council.
Excellent, thank you, Beth. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Okay. There are three other items on our agenda that we're not going to get to tonight, they're all going to stay on the table. Um, is that correct, Beth, because they're not ready to go yet?
Correct.
Okay. So that brings us to other business, the planning director's report.
Yeah, so a couple of things, um, I, I did want to point out that the city council did make some appointments last night, um, they appointed the, um, uh, they appointed, reappointed Diane, who, uh, took her oath of office today, uh, then they appointed Oliver, who took his oath of office today, and they also appointed, uh, Joe, Joe Henslip, um, who was unable to make the meeting on such short notice. Um, uh, Jase, uh, was not reappointed, I thought the board might want to acknowledge and thank him for his, uh, contribution and support, um, over the years of his service, he was appointed to the budget committee. Um, um, so that was just sort of a heads up, um, and then the second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that, um, the city manager has made recommendations, um, for appointments to the design review committee. Um, I guess I would point out to the planning board that Oliver, um, has been serving on the design review committee for the last year. Um, under the ordinance, the planning board is allowed to, um, select three planning board members to serve on the committee, there are currently two on the committee, uh, Lenny and Diane, and should you like, um, should you want, uh, Oliver to continue to serve on design review committee, um, you can accomplish that this evening with a simple motion. Uh, beyond that, the city manager has made a recommendation for five additional people, um, to be considered to fill three slots, make sure I get these numbers right. Um, among them are, uh, um, Tom Gagne, who is currently serving on the committee, and then there are, uh, three additional people whose names have come forward. Um, because this just occurred relatively recently, my suggestion to you is, um, that you designate a subcommittee of the planning board to review these applications, uh, that the city manager has forwarded, um, and to bring the recommendation back to you at the next committee meeting, or the next planning board meeting for your proposed action. Um, so I think you can do this in two parts, or you can certainly make your decision now, but quite honestly, um, I have not fully reviewed that, uh, the, uh, the submissions at this point, the applications of the people who, uh, did apply, that the city manager recommended, and I would want to forward those to you for your consideration. So at this point, if you're comfortable with it, I, um, I would suggest maybe appointing Oliver, so he can attend next week's meeting. Um, and then, uh, if you are comfortable with the idea of a subcommittee, um, you know, it could be, it could be the three planning board designees on the design review committee who could be your subcommittee.
Can we just...
Is Oliver okay with this?
Yep.
I am.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint Oliver to the design review committee.
I'll second it, Diane.
Okay, roll call vote.
Oliver?
I will say yes.
Yeah.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
That's 6O, it's unanimous. And then the second part of that...
Can we consider the appointments to the committee as, as a whole?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question, Lenny.
You're talking about the, uh, the additional three positions to build a design review committee, can we just consider it as a whole, instead of forming a subcommittee?
You certainly can do that, uh, it's going to require the entire committee to review all five people, and you've got to make a decision about whether you want to just go straightforward with an appointment, or if you want to do interviews. Just, it often is a little simpler if you just have a subcommittee digest all of that material and then make a recommendation to the board, but you can go either way, Lenny, however you guys are comfortable doing this. If you would prefer to do it as, um, as a full board, then I would put this on the next agenda and I'll submit the materials to you. I'm going to submit them to you anyway, but.
This is Tom, I, I, I think that if we have the three members of the planning, the site plan review committee to review them, that makes, makes a lot of sense, they understand intimately the ins and outs of the, of the committee and everything else, so, um, they're going to be better to, to respond than I will, personally.
I think she's actually talking about the three current members of the design review committee, is that correct?
The three planning board members who are on design review being the subcommittee.
Right.
So it's Lenny, Jack, excuse me, Lenny, um, Diane, and Oliver.
Can you hear me?
Hi.
I can hear you, Kelly.
Hi, this is Kelly. Um, would it be appropriate to consider reappointing Tom Gagne, he's been a longtime member and, and, uh, and has served well.
That was my next suggestion to the chair.
Thank you, Diane.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I make a motion?
Yeah, I think that would make sense, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, uh, promote, uh, ask that Tom Godd, there goes my French, uh, Gagne, uh, be reappointed, uh, he is very knowledgeable, um, he attends the meetings, uh, he's punctual, um, I'd like to just go ahead and ask that he be reappointed already.
Okay, so you're making a motion?
If the, uh, board wishes, I'd like to make that motion, please.
Do we have a second? Okay, I'll, I'll second that. Can we take a vote on that?
Okay. Yep, Oliver?
I approve.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 6O. So that leaves two more appointments.
Um, Mr. Chair, may I make a motion?
Sure.
Uh, maybe, uh, the three on the design review committee from the planning board, uh, may want to take a brief look at the other, um, applicants. I'm not familiar with any of them.
I haven't even seen the list of names, so I don't know who we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have the names?
Would that be okay?
Need a second?
Second, Tom.
Beth, do you have the names? Is that something you...
Uh, yes, I do, um, it's, uh, the first one is Melissa Lathrop. Um, hold on, if I can find, try to find the other ones. Um, the other names are Gavin Studer, uh, and I can give you a little more information on each of them, um, uh, Melissa Lathrop, um, has an interest in New England history, um, and I don't have really much more information about her right now, because I really have not looked at this. Um, the other people on Steve's list were Gavin Studer, who is a licensed architect and recent resident of Sanford, uh, Jennifer, I don't know if I'm going to say this right, Yuci or Yuki, um, Yuchi, uh, prior master planning service, um, an interest in government and civic duty, and the last, uh, the third one is Melissa Lathrop, um, oh, I'm sorry, that one was already on the list, so there's three other, uh, people, uh, under consideration for the, the two additional positions.
Okay. My personal opinion, I would group to it as a whole, but if you, if you want to delegate that to the three current design review members, I'm okay with that too.
Um, Tom, I don't, I, uh, Lenny, I don't think the suggestion is to delegate the decision to the, uh, the three members, but to have them take a look at it more detail and make a recommendation to the planning board.
Make a recommendation, right, that's, and the group as a whole would vote on it, right.
Correct, at the next meeting.
I like that idea better, yeah.
I like, this is Crystal, I, I like that idea as well.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, um, I guess we can take a vote?
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal? We lose you, Crystal?
I'm sorry, um, yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes 6O.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll see that information in the next couple of days?
You'll see, uh, I'll send the material out fairly quickly, we'll probably try to organize, um, a Zoom call after people have had a chance to take a look at it and have some discussion.
Okay.
And then the recommendation will go back to the planning board at, for their next meeting on the 20th.
Okay.
Okay? And that's all I have for today.
All right, okay. Um, is there anything under communications, does anybody have anything that they would like to say or make a comment?
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Um, I don't know, uh, it's been rather hectic through the, uh, holiday season, um, I, I'm, would like to ask the, uh, director if she has any ideas what's going on with, uh, the Stenton and the, um, proposed company, if that news is going to be coming out soon, as well as the, if there's any, um, news about the demoing of the mill on Jagger Mills Road.
Um, I don't have an update on, um, on the demolition of the Jagger Mills Road, I know that the city council was discussing that, um, and I just haven't had an opportunity to chat with, um, either Ian or the city manager about what the, um, ultimate determination was, but the last I understood, they were going out to bid, uh, for demolition services, and that takes just a bit of time, I think when Ian was talking about it, he said it takes about a month, and that was prior to the holiday, and I don't know how much that might have been delayed by the holiday.
Okay.
With regard to Stenton, um, um, uh, it, I, I have no reason to believe that the, um, the work that has been going on to transfer the property, uh, to begin renovation, has, um, been derailed, what I can tell you is what's causing the slow up is the COVID stuff and the fact that people have to have issues about getting in the same room, um, particularly when they have to cross state lines and quarantine.
I see, okay.
But the, the plans are still going, nothing has upset them at this point, it's, it's just that we're all stuck in, in this COVID situation that is complicating everything for everybody.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just want to take a comment, make a, take a second, make a comment. I know Jace is with us, I can see him on the screen, so I already know he's with us.
Oh.
I just want to thank Jace for taking time to be with us on the planning board over the last few years. Um, I know he's been our secretary and he's, he's been a valuable part of the committee. And I just want to thank him for the time that he has put in. And I know he's going to do a good job on the budget committee.
Ditto.
I agree also.
This is Crystal, good luck, Jace.
Thank you all, it was wonderful serving with you.
Thanks, Jace. Uh, good, good luck with the budget committee. There's a lot, a lot of money to spend there. Okay, does anybody else have anything that they would like to add?
This is Crystal, I would like to congratulate the newly appointed, um, positions and, uh, good luck to you guys.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, there's one more thing I'd like to make a comment on, if I may. Um, the previous chair, Jennifer Georges, was on the, uh, Good Old Brook, uh, I'm going to say this wrong, restoration type thing. Yes, thank you, um, for, and she was working, um, in that capacity, uh, with the Good Old Brook. And, um, we've lost her on that position. Um, I know that there was some type of bid put out in the summer in regards to a different phase coming up. Um, I saw it on the bid notices on the city's website. And I was wondering if, uh, can we put someone in her place on that advisory committee?
Uh, you certainly could. I know that even though Jennifer was on the committee, she, she had difficulty attending because the meetings are during the daytime.
Right.
My only suggestion is that, um, you select a, a member, um, who will be able to meet. It's, it's not a large time commitment. I think we're looking at maybe another three meetings, three meetings over a year and a half. Um, so it shouldn't be an enormous time commitment, but in keeping with the board's sort of policy of trying to have as many of its members on, um, other committees so that they could serve as a liaison with the planning board, um, that certainly would be, I think, a welcome addition.
Can I nominate Joe Hanslip, cause he's not here?
I'll second that motion. Also, Mr. Chair, we also had, uh, Jace Clark on another s- subcommittee, uh, for Brownfield. Is that still a go, Beth?
That's still a go. Jace is still willing to participate on that, and I've encouraged him to do so. Uh, that committee will have a role as part of updating the area-wide plan for the Mill Yard, which will be part of the comp plan work, so that would be a great, um, addition. Um, I don't remember if there's another planning board member on Brownfield's advisory committee or not, but certainly.
It's me.
Than Diane. So we do have a planning board liaison on there as well.
Okay, great. I just wanted to double check that. I would like to keep him on that if it was all possible.
Yep, absolutely. Are you guys serious about that motion, um, nominating Joe to, uh, Good Old Brook? Because there was a, a motion and a second on that. And if so, there should be a vote.
I'm very serious about it.
Should we take that out, just to tell him when Joe is here to defend himself, or?
Yeah, I would, I would ask him first, see if he's interested.
Okay. So what would be appropriate now is that somebody makes a motion and a second to table, and I'll make sure we put this on the agenda next, uh, for the next meeting.
Motion to table the nomination.
Second it, Diane.
Okay, good.
And we need to vote on that?
Oh, yes, you do, I'm sorry. Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
And then motion carries six out.
Okay, so does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Tom.
Okay, and there's no work session tonight, is that correct?
I, I think we can forego it.
Okay. Does anybody object to adjournment? Okay, hearing no objections, I guess we're, we're good to go.
All right. Thank you all.
Have a great night, everybody.
Forward to working with you, um, Oliver.
Same here.
Yes, welcome, Oliver.
Thank you, thank you, sorry to be here.